Yeah, not many calls today to sign me up for this week.
I'll call this work session of the Anchorage School District Board to order at four o'clock on May 6. In the room, we have Member Bellamy, Member Lessons, Member Holloman, the Superintendent Sullivan, Member Jacobs. Member Donnelly is excused, and we believe Member Higgins and Member Wilson are on their way. With that, we will, I will turn it over to the Superintendent for a discussion about budget and emergency preparedness.
Thanks, Mr. President. So we'll begin with a budget conversation, and if time permits, we do have an update on emergency preparedness, but we're happy to reschedule if we need to. I did want to start off with just a couple of remarks. So we did have a major milestone last week, and the House Bill 57 passed, and it both passed, it also passed with 48 of 60 votes needed, and that's really strong bipartisan support across caucuses, and the bill represents a blend of policy, and it is a major step forward in rectifying and providing financial relief to districts that have been desperate for additional recurring funding, though, of course, it's still a step in the right direction. $700 unfortunately isn't nearly the amount for ASD to become whole again. But with that said, the bills with the governor, it could be vetoed, but we also know that the governor supports the BSA increase as well, because he did put that in his own bill, though it was for an amount of $560 per student. So all of that to say, really, tonight, this positive movement and momentum in the legislature unlocks an opportunity for the board that we'll discuss later tonight, and that would essentially be to take on a calculated level of risk by assuming that the legislature and the governor will ultimately approve a school funding bill this session. That's a big decision. I will say that the Finance Committee for ASD met last week, and they put a lot of thought and discussion into the idea of projecting $560, which is a conservative estimate, being that $700 is what's being considered by the governor. So really, today, I wanted to make sure that the board is aware of all the key considerations, because that is a big decision. It does mean taking on a bit of risk, but with a lot of important context in mind. So with that said, it does unlock an opportunity. The idea of projecting revenue does mean that we can start to reverse some of the damage that's been done because of the very, very severe nature of our financial situation, and I do recognize that employee morale is at an all-time low, and we really, we're looking for a hero, and I think tonight, we can be at least one of several heroes that will need to get through this crisis. So I'll let our Chief Financial Officer take it from here.
Thank you. For the record, Andy Ratliff, I'm the Chief Financial Officer. Really, for the purpose of this, we wanted to go into the assumptions that went into projecting the revenue in Board Member 153, the Finance Committee's recommended additions, what reductions are still in place for the next budget cycle, some of the risks and benefits, and then the outlook for FY 27. And as I go through this, you know, you guys, the board is the ones that really kind of made this proposal and come up with this, so please jump in here as you feel fit, and we can change these slides later on if we need to add some additional context to it. So really, the basis for that proposed budget revision was HB 57 passed the House with overwhelming support. As Dr. Bryant mentioned, 48 out of 60 legislators voted to approve it, and it's currently awaiting the governor's signature or alternatively veto. That included a $700 BSA increase, a 10% increase in transportation revenue, and then a CTE multiplier and a proficiency incentive that would be contingent upon SB 113 passing, which would be a digital sales tax, I believe. So all that to say, that's just kind of the broad support for quite a bit more money than what is going to be proposed in this addition from the school board.
Mr. Chair. Member Jacobs.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. While we're here on this slide, could you touch on how much of our FY 26 operating budget for student transportation is subsidized by the MOA, and then, under the proposed forthcoming regulation from D that would potentially limit how those transportation dollars could be counted against ASD in the local max? How would that impact our FY 26 budget if we had to incorporate and fully fund transportation within our own budget without any outside assistance?
Sure. So I think there's about 12 million, 12 or 13 million that the city has requested to kick in for our transportation fund. And between our transportation and our general fund, we're at the city cap. So if we got additional money through the BSA, that would actually raise the state cap, and procedurally, what would likely happen in that instance, if we don't get more money for transportation, but we can accept more city dollars into our general fund, is you could just accept that money in the general fund and transfer it out to the transportation fund. So that's kind of the accounting concept before, but if you wanted this, or if the city had more money to kick in, put into the pot for operational dollars to accept that too, I mean, that's, that's one way to do it, but to the extent that the BSA or other funding does not increase that state cap, then yes, we are going to have some significant deficiencies in our transportation fund and limits, limits on how much we can collect in our general fund that would thereby be transferred over to transportation. The rest of kind of the budget revision estimate would be based on the governor's proposed bill, which included a $560 BSA increase, along with some other policy changings for correspondence and charter schools. Want to note that FY 25, one-time funding for this year was a $680 BSA increase, so this is what you guys are proposing in here is less than what we actually received for this year, so they would have to go backwards in funding to be able to, or to to even get to where you guys are proposing the bill to be. And then just taking the calculated, acknowledge the calculated risk needed to help retain the staff prior to the layoff notices going out or the displacement process being finalized. You know, last time we ended up issuing a layoff notices, I think it was like somewhere around a third of the employees didn't come back. So it's really what we're trying to avoid in this scenario.
Mr. Chair.
And let me note that we've been joined by Member Wilson and Member Higgins.
Member Jacobs. Yep, thank you. While we're talking about the importance of not laying off staff, we anticipate or have the ability to bring back later. Could you refresh our memory as to how much we estimate it costs for ASD to replace an educator or an AEA employee if they're the same cost?
It's a little over $29,000. We've estimated each time we have to recruit a new certificated staff member for hire.
Thank you.
Was there any questions or revisions to kind of the decision-making process or the, the ideal behind making this assumption for revenue? Or did that pretty well capture it? Okay. So with that, there was a little under $40 million that was added back based on a $560 BSA increase. That would amend the PTR proposed increase of a plus four down to a plus one, so we're still increasing class sizes, just not quite as much. It would increase our holdback pool to address what's going to be more common class size bubbles. The fewer teachers we get, the harder it is to kind of have these scheduling things, and this is really going to help with those scheduling conflicts. The reverse cuts to the gifted program, mainly Ignite. The charter school funding is just a proportionate share of what that $560 increase would be to them. It adds back immersion teachers, special education elementary school teachers, as well as provides for a little bit of a correspondence allotment increase. The paraprofessional educators for kindergarten would come back, as well as summer schools, some pre-K teachers, about all the books, and there's a little bit of a discrepancy in the amount for the gifted teachers that we went ahead and plugged into the attrition estimate, so that'll bring that 41 million and change down to 41 million and slightly less change. But about 31, there were $30 million or so going towards just direct instruction right into our, in our classrooms. We also added some things back into instructional support, about 9.7 million to that, including reversing the cuts to the librarians, nurses, sports, the reading interventionist or the teaching and learning staff, principals, library assistants, counselors, and the deaf and hard of hearing program, and then invest in some new counselors to be in alignment with board guardrails around having at least halftime within the elementary schools. So as we get to the reductions that are still in place, about 70 teachers were reduced based on enrollment. The PTR adjustment of plus one is going to be 57 teachers, about $7 million. This does show, like, when we change these charts for the, like, the holdback teachers, you'll see those added back. The program-based teachers gets added back, because that's where the immersion teachers were at. We'll still be reducing some principals based on school closures. Adding the counselors, librarians, nurses, and clerical are based on school closures, and then the elementary noon duty is kind of based on both the overall population of schools, and they're tied to the number of teachers or kindergarten teachers especially at school, so, and as we close schools, those noon duty resources go away as well. The charter school funding you'll see on there, and then some of the other things were left over from the previous cuts. The biggest one being family partnership, as that program has, the number of students has gone down, so we don't need as much money to pay for the allotments. So we're still reducing a little over $14 million in school-based services. About $1.2 million in special services, which includes reductions to, the biggest ones into Special Ed Elementary School and Whaley as a majority of that, adding some things into other special education areas. And then lastly, still about seven and a half million dollars in administrat, administrative reductions. That was about 8.9 million, if I recall correctly, but what changed on here was the teaching and learning staff was the, those ones that were based out of teaching and learning were actually included on this slide, so as you see that on the teaching and learning slide line, that's where that went down. So it wasn't as necessarily a school base, but it was in this admin line. Still reducing 31 FTE out of the administrative pool, about, again, seven and a half million. And we'll get to some of the things that when we start talking about the FY 27 deficit, what's not going to be added back, or that it may need to be added back.
Member Lessons.
Thanks. I really appreciate understanding what the budget truly cut, right? I know that two and a half months ago, when there was an amendment package that was approved by the board, there were a couple of items that were not part of the FY 25 budget, but that were presented in the amendment, which maybe we're not seeing here, which included reducing pupil teacher ratios to a level last seen in FY 16, and that was like a $4 million investment. We would have needed to not just prevent the PTR plus four, but to, to go back down in time. And we had also talked at that point and approved an idea, a plan, to invest in high-dose tutoring, and that was another $4 million item. So those, I just wanted to throw out really what's not on the table here at this point in time for, for additional context, especially knowing how important class size reduction was to legislators in both houses, and I think on, on both sides of the aisle. Does not appear to be that we have the capacity to reduce class sizes as much as we would like.
Yeah, certainly not in this proposal, and certainly not even whatever the best practices, and when you look at adequacy, adequacy studies are, where it's 15 in elementary and 25 in secondary, nowhere near close to that, but definitely a project we want to work on is trying to develop those lists of the things that we've, both what we've cut over the years, kind of what our staffing levels are at, and really what they should be, is talking about what's going to be best for our students, so developing those lists and then putting the cost to them to show the legislators and anyone who's interested what it would look like to provide that adequate education.
Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. If, if the board assumed and, and assumed a $700 BSA increase were to be allocated and not vetoed either through the policy or operating budget opportunity, would we have sufficient dollars if every single penny of those, of that funding was directed to reducing class sizes and hiring teacher? Would we be able to meet the class size goals in HB 57 as adopted?
Of 23 at elementary and I believe it was 30. Not with 700 BSA, I don't believe so. We'll do that, have to do the math, but right now, we're at between, it'll be 22 or 23 and 27 in elementary schools. So getting that all down to 23 is going to be fairly expensive, and I suspect it's going to be more than the 10 million or so it would generate above what you've provided here.
Could I follow up, Mr. Chair? Yeah, I just want to highlight that, I think it's a very relevant fact that the legislature included some really great goals for class size, but not the funding to effectuate them, and that, I think, is okay, provided that we all enter the conversation. I say we local and state lawmakers together enter the conversation, understanding that this really is just a solid first step in terms of legislation, and we're going to have to be right back at the conversation starting in January as to how we continue to narrow that gap to effectuate the, the class size goals and other academic goals that the legislature wants to see. Because even if we are, even if we, even if we provide every single dollar in classroom instruction, we can't meet those goals, and that would, of course, entail cutting really valued programs that we are proposing to fund for at least the next fiscal year at this point, and that needs to be highlighted and well-understood here locally as well as in Juno. The other question I had is while we're looking at administrative costs, do you know with this proposed spending plan, if we're still roughly in the 5%, and, and maybe just a tiny bit higher, district administration cost and 95% to direct instruction and related supports? Have we calculated that yet?
Yeah, we did a look at that, and it didn't really change significantly from the that kind of circle chart that we provided before. Admin, maintenance, operations goes down a little bit, and the other ones go up a little bit, but, you know, you're looking like, you know, fractions of a half a percent, maybe 0.4%, so not in a, me, like, I guess, a statistically meaningful amount there.
Thank you.
But I would say we can do, you know, we need to do a better job. Let's, administration coming up, as you've mentioned, the class sizes, articulating what that means financially. So if they say 23 is the target, okay, what's that going to cost? And still allow us to operate and do business the, the way we need to do business. All right, so some of the risks and benefits, the risk if some amount less than 560 BSA is allocated, this could result in hiring freezes, funding reductions for all the discretionary funds, and then liquidating assigned fund balance reserves to be able to not spend into a deficit or have negative fund balance essentially. So that's just kind of the, you know, if we were to get, in the very unlikely event, we were to get a zero BSA increase and have to make up $40 million, and all our certificated staff, those are contractually guaranteed for the rest of the year. Once we kind of enter into that, then there are things we can do to help build that fund balance back up or not go negative. And one of them, the biggest one, whatever you have to pull, is actually liquidating those assigned fund balances, which are encumbrances, reserves for self-insurance, things like that that we have set aside for other purposes. But there's a hierarchy in which you have to liquidate these fund balances that's dictated by CASB. So we'd have to look at that and see which ones are in these different categories, which ones are the most acceptable to liquidate in that, in that unfortunate instance. But the benefit, again, it does allow for placement of our staff prior to the end of school and to help retain our educators.
Mr. Chair.
Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. For context, does administration have any sense as to how many school districts, either from the Big Five or broadly speaking from the state, are anticipating a figure greater than 560? I know Fairbanks right now was looking at 680, and they also anticipated one-time funds, which was interesting, because they were going to use the one-time funds and take that charter money, which we typically don't do, but they, they have in practice, taken that money and applied it to non-charter expenses, and so they're actually having to dial back potentially some of the investments they might need to, might need to make. I know Matsu at some point was in planning and budgeting on a $1,000 BSA increase. Juno was a few hundred dollars, and so for perspective, it might be helpful to know how many other districts are having the same conversations, that we know we're not alone in this having to make a, a calculated risk.
Yeah, I believe all the Big Five are making, I haven't really talked to many of the smaller districts, but.
Right, I could chime in here. So my recollection is that Juno projected $400 in additional revenue. This would put ASD at 560, and then Fairbanks would be 680. Matsu, I believe, projected higher than 680, isn't that, may have been a thousand, they may have projected a thousand. So this is important to spell out, because again, we wouldn't be alone, but we are being very intentional about projecting a conservative amount, because right now, the dollars in play is about $700 per student. We're intentionally projecting less than that. We're assuming 560, because we understand that in the final hours of negotiations, that figure could go down. We do also recognize that the governor could line item veto or reduce funding towards education, and I think that this recognizes it, but also puts in perspective the fact that the governor has put his own bill in play that does advocate for a 560 permanent increase, and that hasn't always been the case. So this is something that recognizes that in a calculated strategic way.
I follow up, Mr. Chair.
Member Jacobs.
Yep, thank you. I think the other thing it highlights is, is that our, our system right now is fundamentally broken, the fact that we have districts estimating and taking calculated risks with their budget that impacts students months before the budget takes effect. I hope this exercise is a wake-up call to Juno, and I'm grateful that administration are supporting the board in making this calculated risk. Thank you.
And to add to that, I'll, I'll say that the idea for the center of adjustment when it first came up, I think it's important for everyone to understand that we are taking a risk. A lot of people have written to the board about wanting us to reinstate certain specific positions or take some action, and we've had to explain that, given the budget numbers, the administration really can't do anything, because we spent our fund balance down to the minimum. I hope people don't think that suddenly we've got the money and everything's good. There still is uncertainty in this, but it does allow the administration to take steps to relieve some of the anguish of people in the district that are caught not knowing where they're going to be. This lets them know where the district wants them to be, but we're still very contingent on those funds coming through. Obviously, the people we promised jobs to will have jobs, but, but if things fall apart in the legislature, it will be worse than if we did not do this. But if they do come together and they, they do hit the 700 number, having done this makes it better than it would have been. So it's a gamble, but we're, we're assuming resources that we don't actually have in fact, and that goes back to Member Jacob's comment. The system's kind of broken for us. I, I would love for it to be a wake-up call, but I don't think it's wild enough to do that, but, but it's important that we keep relating that to them. Thank you. Please go on. Our Member Watsons.
Thank you. I think one of the, oh, I'm echoing now. I appreciate that, so all of the work that has gone into where we are this evening. I mean, this, this is the culmination of months and months of work and adaptation and prediction and trying to put our hearts and souls into serving our students. I would be interested in understanding what effectively a PTR plus one I would be interested in understanding what effectively a PTR plus one. Is going to mean for for different schools? And I realize that maybe I'm asking that and that could be. Difficult to exactly pin down, but perhaps it's it's doable. Because this doesn't propose reversing the entire PTR plus four. It says, we're not going to go up 1234, we're just going to go up one. And so this is an increase of class sizes. It is a reduction of staff in in really every building. And so I I would appreciate it at some point, understanding what that impact would be to our different schools. And I think the related question is, and maybe this is more of an HR question. Assuming, you know, if memo 153 passes later this evening, does that mean that tomorrow the administration begins walking? Movement backwards? And could you just sort of give a bit of an overview at this point to that process?
I can start addressing that question, member lessons. So I think assuming the memo passes tonight as written. I think there are three things that it will allow us to do. One, it will allow us to avoid layoff of any certificated staff. Right now, we still have displacement obligations to about 84 individuals that otherwise we would have to lay off without projecting additional funding. Second, it allows us to reverse the the remainder of folks who were displaced. And were given positions, it would allow principals to reabsorb the majority of those folks back into their building. And tomorrow we have general leadership with our principals. We'll begin walking them through. The plan for how to do that. And then those notifications would begin on Thursday with staff. And anybody who was displaced through this process would be notified. On Thursday, whether or not they're reabsorbed into their current position or whether or not they would remain displaced. Because we with the PTR increase of one and with the enrollment decline, we still have some folks who may not be able to remain in their positions that they're currently in this year. But then we would run an accelerated staffing process that would allow us to place them in in openings in other buildings that we know we have. And so by the end of the year, we would be able to find a placement for. Everybody who was affected by that displacement process. That way they know whether or not they need to pack up their room, whether or not they don't need to pack up their room, or whether or not they need to unpack the boxes that they had started packing, thinking they might need to leave. And so we want before people head into summer, we really want to be able to confirm what the status is for them. And then the third thing it would allow us to do is move to external hires. Because in some job areas, we will definitely have openings beyond restoring those folks back to their their positions who are displaced. And we need principals to start acting quickly to hire folks externally to fill those vacancies. Because we know as we head into summer that those pools really disappear. And by the time we come back in July and August, there are no candidates to hire for those vacancies. So passage of the memo tonight would really allow us to do all three of those things.
Member Boney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I keep thinking about the May 15th. Is that contract date? What has to happen on May 15? And does 53 help you with that? Does this memo?
So May 15th is the statutory deadline to notify any tenured teachers if they're laid off. And so again, memo 153 would allow us to avoid laying off any certificated staff. And so that deadline essentially would become, you know, meaningless for this year.
All right. That's what I thought. Thanks.
Member Jacobs.
Yep. Could you walk through, I mean, when we when we displace a teacher that isn't. Even if it's related to a loss of enrollment, but especially if it's related to a PTR increase. That work and that job doesn't necessarily go away. The the impact to the teacher is significant and measurable. Can someone speak to what that process looks like and how we support our educators through the displacement process? And what are the impacts like at the building where the educator is displaced from?
So I'll take that one, member Jacobs. So when a when a teacher is displaced, the principal is telling the teacher, you know. At this point, you don't have a position here at this school, but you're being displaced and you'll have the opportunity to be looking at positions at others. At other schools. And at that point, the member is allowed to fill out a preference sheet. Actually, like what positions would this teacher want to go into? And then when you go into the staffing. Meeting, we're looking to try to get that teacher into position that they want to be at. Hopefully it's a match match with a school that has a need with this with the teacher who's displaced. What happens at the school that where that teacher leaves, class sizes go up, programs go away. It depends upon the exact situation. Sections get reduced at secondary. There's a whole gambit of different things that happen at the actual school where that person is being displaced from. At the end of the day, if this memo was to happen and be passed. We'll have some teachers that will still be displaced because of the enrollment and the plus one PTR. And we'll be looking for homes for them. However, every member has one transfer, right? Per year, one voluntary transfer. We're going to be allowing any teachers that have done that because of displacements earlier this time. They're going to still get their one, even though they've done it already once before. There's a whole bunch of different little teeny things that we've been having to work through and and it's very complex. This is the first time we've ever had this level of. Read read. What do you would you call it going back? And so there's a lot of pieces to it, but I hope that does that answer your question?
If I might follow Mr. Chair. Yeah, it does answer, I think, the broad question. It brings up another one, which I guess, as I know, the board prioritized the creation of a recruitment and retention working group. Specifically built around trying to remedy internally our challenge of retaining educators that we have and recruiting new ones. Work that specifically can't be taken up at the legislative level. Of course, we need our legislature to to fix the fact that we don't have a pension, unlike any other state in the nation. We ask our educators to navigate the worst retirement system of any group of educators in our nation, which is really. It we know it's a recruitment and retention challenge and the deed survey conducted in 2021, 2022 bears that out. But my suspicion is that among the cohort of displaced teachers that we see a higher level of resignations. Is that true? Do we know how many folks who have been displaced have resigned in lieu of accepting a displacement or because the process is still in the early stages? Do we not have a handle on that yet?
Like Mr. Ratliff referred to earlier, when we last went through a round of layoffs, we tracked pretty closely how many folks didn't return when that recall was issued. It's a little bit more difficult with displacements to to measure that impact. Because if they do choose to resign the district. Their reason that they stayed on their notice of resignation, they self select. And so, you know, there are a number of categories there. And and, you know, they may choose just personal and not share with us that that the displacement specifically was the reason for that. I mean, anecdotally, I can say, having been a principal in a building, that when you sit down with someone who displaced them and they have. You know, invested in that school and in that community and in, you know, being an excellent educator for the students that they serve. That that displacement always feels like a gut punch. It always, I think, erodes their confidence in us as an employer. And I wish there had been some way that we could have avoided, you know, displacing as many folks as we did this year because we know that that's impactful. We know that that has a lasting impact for our employees too, and we'll have to work hard to to build back the, you know, that trust with them. I will say that the passage of this memo tonight does allow us to start down that path. I think many will be feel much better on Thursday when they hear that they're reabsorbed into their school. That they're they have the opportunity to return and continue to invest in that school school community that they're a part of. Just to give you a sense of the scale, we did notify little over 200 people at some point through the staffing season, unfortunately, that they were displaced. As we're looking forward and and kind of projecting the the impact with this new variable of this projected revenue. We think that's going to scale back to about 25 or 30 individuals, so a much smaller footprint of folks who will be displaced. And have to be placed somewhere else and will work like Mr. Guffsterson said, to solicit their preferences and do everything we can to try to find them a placement for next year. That they are excited about in the hopes that they will choose to stay and continue to invest and work in ASD for our students.
Member Lessons.
Thanks. I appreciate this open forum to ask questions. Do we have any sense of what, and maybe this is more at the secondary level than elementary? What are the opportunities for students that we think will be brought back with this action? I mean, my 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 general understanding is that when the PTR goes up, electives go down and core classes get bigger. So what I'm hoping is that classes will get smaller and elective offerings and AP offerings, et cetera, will will sort of. Expand again.
That that will be on a school by school basis and that work starts tomorrow with the principals because we can't. Determine what they're going to project and what those decisions will be. You know, these decisions are going to be very quick and they probably have a a list of what they would bring back due to how many kids are requesting certain classes and so on and so forth. But again, with the reduction of the the enrollment and the plus one PTR, it is a cut still, so they they won't get back to the regular.
I would certainly defer to the administration and superintendent discretion, but it does strike me that. Understanding what those opportunities are could be helpful in advocacy moving forward. You know, if I am a parent and I my student goes to XYZ school and I understand that this is on the table of being there next year or or not. Knowing that information could empower me to write to my legislators, for example. And say, this matters to my family because this impacts my child's life or a student could could take that information as well. So I guess more information would would be appreciated, although I don't know if that's a manageable ask.
I I would love to say, you know, member lessons, we could, we could definitely get that for you, but I'll tell you the amount of work that is just getting to actually get people back. Off a displaced list has been extensive already just since Thursday. And we we might have an idea on that, but we we wouldn't even know like for sure what what would come back if more money came back. Above the 560, right? I mean, what? I I don't know if we'd be able to get that to you very quickly.
Member Boney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we, I like a member lessons. Analogy that this is a triage, that we're trying to just do the best we can for, you know, to save ourselves and our kids really. So it's not a cure all. I'm glad that we have a plan in place for staff so that we can give them some. Not certainty, but some peace of mind, maybe for for at least for having a job and going to where they want to go. Well, at least most of them. But I guess I, if I'm a parent, I got a kid coming in kindergarten, I've got a sixth grader. And I've got a ninth grader. What what do I, what am I, what do you want me to know about this? About what what do parents need to know? Anybody, I mean, I know they can, we they can look and see that we're going to bring back the sports. That's going to be an easy one.
We're going to bring back the sports. We're going to bring back the librarian and the nurse and and that. That stuff where there's probably still going to be some combo classes at elementary schools.
There will be some combo classes at elementary, not maybe.
Yeah, there will be, I guess, should I say. I think that what this is going to do is allow us to actually create a schedule for elementary schools. We were having a difficult time with our specials. Actually creating a schedule so that we could actually have specials in our elementary schools with the level of cut that we had right there. And so we've had five people since every day, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday and today. Working specifically on specials all day, every day, trying to figure that out. And we think we have that figured out. However, it's just to be able to do that in our schools. That we're at the bare minimum, even with what we're putting back in. And and so there's, you know, the 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 teachers that are one are still here and haven't resigned are going to be here. I think that's the big thing is those teachers are going to be here and we're able to have some resemblance of, you know, the full staffing with this with the in the libraries and in the nurses and. There's still a lot there that we're missing, but like educators do, they come to school, they teach our kids. They work hard. They want to do what's best for our kids. But to tell them what they're going to have right now, I. I don't know if I could promise any anything right now until we get everything mapped out.
Okay. And and I guess I just, I just want to make sure that. Parents understand that it's not going to be like it was last year, not in every single case. It's just not. And that not that that we're not, not that we've cut it. All right, like we've gotten rid of it, but it's just not possible. So I just don't want parents thinking that everything's coming back and it's going to be hunky dory and, you know. It's because it's not. And I don't know if that requires some kind of messaging that with our principals. When they talk to our 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 parents. But I just don't want them to, I just want to, I want to be as crystal clear to parents as possible. That while we are pulling, bringing back some things, memo 153 is not going to cure all of our ails. And I and I and I think I think our staff probably get that a lot better than our parents. So and I don't have the answer. I'm just posing the question.
Thank you. I would add into that. Partly as points to the public, but also for board members to remember and talking to the public. A lot of people don't fully realize how much planning goes on for the fall as of now. It normally has started before now. And it's all, it's all a little bit hypothetical until we really know a budget or or have some certainty on it. But it's for people trying to make the schedules that put teachers in rooms with kids in front of them. And have the right offerings at all the right buildings and all that stuff that that's usually is all going on now and staffing has happened. There's a tremendous cost every year in the uncertainty that we go through. And as board members, we primarily focus on our issue of the budget. We have to pass something without really knowing what revenue is. But for people that are in in the situation of being shifted around, there is a tremendous amount of uncertainty. And Mr. Wang used the term unreliable employer. That is how people begin to see it. And even hopefully they see through the part that ASD is not really trying to be an unreliable employer. But that. Teaching has gotten more politicized than it used to be, which is not something I really expected to see happen. It felt politicized enough 15 years ago, but much more so now. And people realize that that their jobs and whatnot are affected by it. Including teacher, you know, normally when you come into a district, there is a period of uncertainty for a number of years. But it used to be that as a few people at the top moved out and you went up on the seniority scale. A certain amount of certainty came to that. But I know in in this round of involuntary transfers, it affected people with eight, nine, 10 years in the district. They normally don't expect things like that to happen. And if they look at it and realize they may have another seven, eight or nine years of uncertainty. That really, then you really begin to look at whether or not you're in the right place or working for the right people. I do think it's important that we keep in mind what we're losing, what we're not bringing back with this. And I do want to emphasize this, this is not truly bringing those things back. This is allowing the administration to act as if we're going to have those funds. But there's a tremendous amount of uncertainty still riding out there that. That will remain until the legislature does what it does. And and again, this memo that we're going to vote on tonight in no way was meant to suggest that it's adequate. It was meant to take care of the worst situations to prevent further damage to the district from the uncertainty that is out there. And it's hopefully a significant underestimation. And it's hopefully a significant underestimation of what will finally wind up coming to us when, when everything in the legislature is said and done. So just kind of some key points on that. Would you like to continue? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So while we did add about forty million dollars back with that five sixty, we still cut twenty-three million dollars. That's, that's real things that are lost. You know, as we talk about the good news of being able to add stuff back and get rid of that pesky stuff and focus on the bad now. So here's where the general fund outlook is for FY twenty-seven. So like I said, we've cut twenty-three million already, even with that ongoing revenue. So I want to kind of calculate out what FY twenty-seven is going to look like without any additional action. So that first line is our ongoing revenue. That includes the increase of five hundred and sixty to the BSA for a total of about five hundred and eighty-five million. And our expenses are about six hundred and thirty-four million. And that's because of the nearly fifty million dollars in fund balance that we put in there. That fund balance is going to draw us down to where we have nothing to put towards FY twenty-seven. Estimated three percent or so costs on increase for labor, utilities, insurance, every other thing that we have to buy. Three percent is probably pretty conservative at this point. It's about nineteen million dollars. So to get to your ongoing costs, based on what we've added back tonight or potentially add back tonight, about six hundred and fifty-three million. And then you add that back to that, the delayed purchases from FY twenty-six that we took out of the budget for major maintenance, IT devices, equipment replacement, curriculum updates, about six million. That's just kind of the bare minimum of things. So that gets you to about a seventy-five million dollar deficit with a lot of things that are unknown, including unsettled labor contracts, enrollment variances, tariffs, increases in medical costs, utility rate changes, an equipment failure and emergent facility maintenance that we've seen this year. So there's a lot of needs out there. Just kind of the rough projection, that's another seventy-five million on top of the twenty-three million or so that we've cut out for this year. So over a two-year span would be about a hundred million dollars in cuts, give or take. You know, several million dollars on either side, depending on how some of those contractual agreements shake out. But again, just want to emphasize that this is really, really, really early on projections. And, you know, we'll refine these as they go on. But this is really just kind of a rough ballpark. So seventy to eighty million dollar deficit for twenty-seven.
Member Lessons.
Yeah, if, if you're able, so we are talking about a five hundred and sixty dollar figure. House Bill fifty-seven incorporates a seven hundred dollar figure plus additional possibilities. But if we were to just focus on the seven hundred, what would House Bill fifty-seven, as that BSA figure stands, due to the deficit estimate?
So that would depend on what we did with the extra bunny. So if we get an extra hundred and forty dollars in the BSA increase, another ten million or so. If the board chose to add that all back into the budget and try to spend it in this year, that really puts us at about the same deficit, a little bit higher because your inflationary number on that, a little bit higher expenditures is going to go up. But really, the simple math on it is the amount we're not going to have in fund balance, the fifty million plus whatever inflationary costs we have on our expenditures.
Member Higgins.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I guess I can only play this out a little bit because right now, we've got a legislature that has not shown an increased interest in generating new revenues. We've got the constitutional budget reserve being drained and that's an issue of what they're going to get. We don't know what the oil price is going to be, but we know that that's a variable that hasn't been that perfect for us in the near future and oil taxes addressing that is like a third rail. So that's not going to happen in our foreseeable future with the current governor and this legislature. And so we're going to have less money for legislature to look at adding to this, maybe. That's a possibility. They don't want to use any other revenues. They've already gone down to a quarter for the PFD. So they've reduced that, using that money and that, that's, you know, ongoing. So we're going to be in February, looking like we were this year potentially, because we're not going to necessarily get the legislature and the governor to agree to a BSA. And that puts us back sending notices to everybody with this projection, or not everybody, but to a lot of valued staff without any sort of security. So what we're really, and I'm going to lay this out because the governor and legislature is putting us in a position without assurances of going forward and giving us less than, the thousand would have given us some variable, more manageable. But they're going to put us in the position so that next year, we're going to be doing this. Staff are going to have to look at that early. And we're going to be right back where we were. And it doesn't send the most positive message for recruitment, retention for ASD as well with all of the funding that we've got as we try to finalize union contracts and do everything else. So I'm just, the projection for now is that February of next year can be like February this year. Is that, is that, am I off somewhere? I think like that has to be.
In fact, you're fairly optimistic about that, Mr. Higgins.
I, I, I feel like that's optimistic because it could be much worse next year.
Well, right. I mean, we cut out about sixty-five million out of the, trimmed out that much out of this year's budget, just to get to it to balance. You're looking at an extra ten million or so for next year. Plus, we've already trimmed out twenty-three million of stuff. So that's stuff we just can't take this year. So all the stuff that we put on the list, even the stuff we're adding back, those are going to have to be the conversations again next year. And it's going to be even probably worse than it is now.
Yeah, we don't have the reserves. We've already taken the cuts that we find manageable, more manageable, but we're cutting those still, we're not putting that back. And then we're going to have the same cliff, the fiscal cliff that we're going to be coming off of without anything to grab hold of. So that's, that, you're right, it is worse next year than it is this year with the governor and legislature not willing to commit. They seem to agree we need the money. They just don't want to be responsible for generating where that money is going to come from.
Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I agree with Member Higgins. I was at a community council this past week and heard a legislator, you know, and understandably so, proud and optimistic related to HB fifty-seven and, you know, on paper, historic, without any context, a historic increase to the base student allocation. And kind of remarking offhand that we can't wait ten years to look at increasing the foundation formula again. And I happened to give my report next, but politely pointed out, we can't really wait ten months to have an additional conversation of this kind, in part because the thousand dollar figure, and I was part of those conversations, wasn't representative of what ASD needed now and for the next five years. It was what the legislature really should have been able to do this year had it had the courage to pass legislation to effectuate that kind of increase. There were legislators who maintained to this day that one thousand dollars should have been possible. There was bills that could have effectuated that. And so the legislature effectively at this point has completed part of that work. But we really need to dive right back into the conversation that we need to continue to fund education adequately. But now we're going to have to have a longer and broader conversation about a sustainable long-term fiscal plan because the, there will be challenges associated with finances at the state level next year. But that doesn't remove the obligation the legislature has to maintain a system of public education. So I appreciate the, the context.
That's all I have.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation, depressing as always. We don't hold, we don't blame you. Yeah. Without objection, we will do the emergency planning briefing next work session since we're down to about six minutes and would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of uncontested student hearings, legal updates, negotiations and contracts.
Yeah. With movement seconded, without objection, we are in recess to executive session.